Yeah. Coordinated from New York City. New York City.
Justifying.
Do any justification here at this time. Over minimal. Check them. Um.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're waiting for two more members of the planning board to get here. One will be on. Remote and the other one should be here soon. Yes, it's coming.
But we just fill in the form or is it something that?
You would just excuse yourself, recuse yourself for the first one?
Right. But you have a form for voting.
Yes. Okey dokey.
Hello.
Well, Roman, can you hear us?
We're going to begin the meeting. For. And. Everyone, and this is a meeting of the Albany City Planning Board, February fourteenth. We have with us. Four of our planning board members, which include Roman, who's chair, who's. Participating remotely as well as Martin Hall. And Lisa Goyard, myself, I'm on the salvo, my chair of the planning board. We have with us also Adriana De Leon, who's our corporation counsel. And we have with us on planning staff, Arby Epstein, as he just fell. And Glennon, who's the Debbie planning director. Before, we have two parts of the meeting. First, we have a planning board hearing agenda, hearing with two items on the agenda. And then we have the, we're going to public meeting in which we have. Three, I believe, three items on the agenda. Before we begin, Arby Epstein, a senior planner, will make some comments. Regarding. The major item on the agenda tonight, which is the spoken process for the.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Some general notes. I give some general notes first. These note, there's no, no talking during the meeting unless a member of the planning board has directed a question to you. Just want to make sure everyone's respectful for the board, any applicants that are here for other people that may be providing public comment for tonight's meeting. You know, there's other, other comments there to be made that can be outside of the room. Regarding two fifty seven South Pearl and the Capital City Rescue Mission. The deadline for comment on the seeker scoping process concluded this past Friday, which is February ten. Since the public comment period with the scoping document has ended, we will not be taking any comments on that part of the application during tonight's meeting. There will be additional planning board meetings to discuss the application as a whole, and at that time, we will be taking public comments. Written comments related to the Capital City Rescue Mission can be submitted. In the meantime, they can be sent to planning staff, but we can forward them on to members of the planning board. General notice for future meetings regarding the Capital City Rescue Mission will be sent out following the standard notice procedures that we, that we have. So that'll include formal notices and postings on property. And we'll make sure that there's additional notice provided through, through the website and other avenues as we move along with this project. With that, I'll turn that to Chair to begin the meeting.
Okay, because the rescue mission project is. Possibly. A more lengthy discussion. We want to. Move that towards the end of the agenda so that those folks who have the other projects don't have to sit through the whole meeting. Before we get to their project, so. First thing I would like to do is propose a motion to amend the agenda to move the project to two fifty seven South Pearl Street to the end of the agenda. Second. Second, by the next year, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So we will start now with the public hearing agenda. There are two items on the public hearing agenda. I'll go over the round rules for discussions. I believe one from the public has signed up to comment. So I will note that. If these projects have been presented to the planning board in the past, the applicants will have four minutes to present. And then the board members can ask questions. And then after that, if there, well, there won't be anybody, because nobody signed up, I believe, for any of the projects for the public. So from there, we will. Go to votes and be each of the projects. The first item on the agenda is. Number ten, Duitt Street, the project by Whitney Young Health Center. And the representing agent is an environmental design partnership. And this is to construct approximately four thousand square foot in addition to the existing building to expand its current use. Or control substance dispensary. And one of our board, I'm really think we are, is on the board with the young. Vanessa will not participate in the discussion or obviously in any vote. Gentlemen, ladies.
Good evening, thank you, okay?
Yes.
My name is Brian Osterhaus with Environmental Design Partnership, joined by Jeremy, his architect for Hymane Associates. And Robert and Angela from Whitney Young. Just a little background on this project. It's, it's now combined tax parcel sixty five point zero dash three dash six. Just over a tenth of an acre, zero point one one acres in size. That's just. Just a little history here. This project was in front of the planning board last, I think it was late November or early December. Prior to that, this project has been ongoing with discussions with the city of Albany for several years. And that just is a result of the fact that it's. You know, a small property. We're talking about decommissioning of Duitt Street, and obviously that's somewhat of a lengthy process. The city wanted us to consolidate numerous tax parcels into one to clean that up for Whitney Young as well. So while this is. Somewhat relatively recent with the planning board, the applicant with the young and ourselves and Hymane has been. Working on this project now for several years with the city to, to try to make it happen. My. One of our employees, Brandon, was here from the environmental partnership back in the fall, as I mentioned, in front of the planning board. And based on Brandon's discussion with myself, we know that there was a lot of questions in terms of the operational. Narrative of how Whitney Young operates. And that's primarily because the size of this application doesn't necessarily. Necessitate site plan review, but it is a conditional use permit that the board is considering for this project. So, you know, those operational concerns and questions are certainly very valid. Following that meeting last with the planning board. Whitney Young provided detailed information to the city, including a detailed narrative, which every member of this board should have. To discuss their just in time. Service that they provide their patients and how the facility operates in general. And of course, Angela and Robert are here from Whitney Young to answer any specific operational questions that you have, because that's really what the crux of the discussion was during that time. In addition, comments from all city departments were. Received, reviewed by our office in Hymane Hayes. A revised set of plans and a comment response letter was then submitted back to the city of Albany in January. And last week, we received an updated comment letter. With only a few very minor outstanding departmental comments. The vast majority of the comments were addressed to the satisfaction of the city departments. And it is our hope tonight that we can answer any outstanding questions that you may have about this application. Hopefully complete seeker and. Ideally receive a, a credit. Thank you.
Are there questions from members of board?
Yeah, maybe a little bit about the traffic plan job in terms of present to us and. Yeah, so the, the, there are six proposed parking spaces that are proposed as, as, as a part of the. Expansion. The expansion is really just to allow for more room, patient rooms, privacy things. Angela can certainly talk to that. It's not an expansion of, you know. Like you would think of in, in, in terms of, you know, massive addition of staff or anything like that. It's, it's, it's really just providing care services to the patients that they currently, you know, provide for. They're not, not increasing their patient count or anything of that nature as, as a result of the expansion. But currently, the facility actually has no park. They, they utilize the which street, but that is a city street that is intended to be conveyed over to Whitney Young as part of this, because the which street only serves Whitney Young. As I mentioned, we were at this for several years, working with the water sewer department, cammering. The water in the sewer to make sure that they didn't serve any other properties, that everything basically dead ended on Duitt Street. I should also make note of the fact that the applicant in those two years prior to submitting applications to the planning board. Were in numerous discussions with the adjacent landowners to acquire more property to enhance the facility as well. U-Haul is located just to the north of this. U-Haul was originally interested in, in, in trying to work out either a lot line adjustment or a purchase agreement for some of the additional land. Once I got to their corporate board in Arizona, they decided they were no longer interested in that. So that, that became dead end. Same thing with the warehouse owners to the south of, of our property. So really, this facility is way locked, but it does obviously provide a special service to the city. So. You know, we have a tiny footprint to still work within. Employees that, that do work here had, they have an agreement where they park offsite. They have a recent agreement for the parking that is currently maintained for the employees of the facility. Most of the patients and Angela, you talked to this, that visit this facility, what was it, thirteen? I, I think there's only thirteen patients that actually utilize automobiles to access this facility. And of those thirteen, it's not on a daily basis. Some of them come once, yeah, a couple of times a week. So there is really no significant traffic that's going to be. Entering or. So it means those standards and it has an existing curb cut. We are provo, we are proposing, you know, crosswalks, new sidewalks in this area. Obviously, we have to reroute, provide some easements for the utilities that were currently under city on property of Duitt Street that'll. You know, be maintained so that when transition of Duitt Street goes over to Whitney Young, the city has those easements provided to do any maintenance or repairs that they need to on those. So, yeah. Okay.
Other questions?
Obviously, we need ADA standards as well for the parking too, so.
Other question? Okay. Comments from the board, from the planning staff?
So like the applicant stated, the, the project was in front of the board in end of November, November twenty ninth. They had provided us the additional information that we requested. We've been working with them in, in answering all departmental comments. They spoke to their just in time scheduling, which speaks to how their intake and rotation of patients and the services provided. They are looking to get the conditional use permit based on the expansion of the current use. And like you said, it's not so much the conditionally, the, the number of patients going up. It's the services that they're providing that is. Being expanded. We, from the planning staff, we recommend approval with conditions. And, and they're essentially conditions. Based on approval from the outstanding final approvals from other departments.
Have any of these been. Already handled and filed? Or are they still outstanding?
Condition five has all those tax lots that previously that were consolidated. Once the which street is conveyed over to Whitney Young from the city, we would have to amend that and include that as well. The water supply, we're waiting on a couple of pressure readings back from the Department of Water on that. But again, this is, this is a site that's currently served with water and sewer. So there's no anticipated capacity issues there. I mean, architecturally, we're still, you know, relatively concept phase of this. It's going to go on the detailed design and the MEP, we can have a bunch of, you know, we can have electrical. Engineers just beginning their, their work, but you know, those are normal conditions of approval.
So we will, we will, I guess, keep condition five on there since it's still hard some work to do. Any other questions in staff? Then we will. Two actions, one is to declare us as a secret lead agency. I'll entertain a motion. The planning board, the city lead agency.
Some second.
Second, by Martin Hall, second by Christopher Ellis. Discussion. There are none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal as presented with the conditions, which I will read. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the traffic plan shall be submitted for approval. Also. The maintenance and protection of the tra, of traffic plan shall be submitted to the Division of Traffic Engineering for approval. Third, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the construction plan shall be submitted to the Division of Traffic Engineering Unit for Approval. And the fourth condition is that a final approval shall be obtained from the Division of Engineering and the Department of Water and Water Supply. And finally, the fifth condition, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall consolidate all of the lots. As noted. On the screen and. In your agenda. I have a second. Second by Christopher Ellis. Further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm unanimous. With the app, with the extension of the missing card. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
The next item on the agenda is one twenty one Madison Avenue. The applicant is Meatball Martini Madison. Otherwise known as the old Lamardo group.
Yes, yeah.
And this is to allow for a restaurant to use. The property as a restaurant. And we are necessarily have to review this because. The restaurant size is just over five thousand square feet. And when a restaurant becomes vacant. For what period of time has it has been, the planning board has to review. Plans and move forward with examination and potential approval. Okay, so folks.
Okay, great. Good evening, I'm Stephanie from Business for Good. I'm here with my team. I've got Natalie from SWBR Architects and Curtis and Blain Chapman Associates. I'm just going to start beginning and talk about why this building is such a great fit for Hatties. So Business for Good, we're, we're so excited to put Hatties in downtown Albany location. We currently have two Hatties right now in Syracuse Springs, where all profits go to charity. So we'll be bringing that mission to Albany as well. When we first walked Lombardo's building, we knew automatically this is like the best, great fit for Hatties for the community. So we're very excited, especially to be in the historic Lombardo's building. Business for Good's mission is to build strong communities by investing in them and also the people. And what we want to bring to the community here on Madison Avenue in downtown Albany is. is to embark some change and growth in this area and make it a destination spot where where people can come, have fun, and know that our profits, it's such a great mission that we have all profits going to to charity and also to support other businesses that are going in the area as well. We just and of course, provide a place to gather and eat delicious fried chicken. But I'm gonna now leave to Natalie to go over the drawings, any questions?
So as you can see, it's in the historic Lombardo's, very prominent location on Madison Avenue. And as far as the script work is concerned, it's it's majority of the work is going to be conducted inside. It's already gone through SHPO and has gotten some approval or gotten approved via SHPO. And it's mostly level one alteration, so it finishes with a slight configuration, reconfiguration for the bathrooms to make them accessible. The exterior would be the exterior would be getting a facelift, the new awning in the front and new signage. The reu- reusing the existing Lombardo signage, changing the wording. And the rest of it is mostly just replacement materials. To face up. And the upper level apartments will remain upper level apartments and also just new finishes and fixtures. So they will remain the same.
Are the upper level apartments currently occupied?
They don't, no, we have tenants in there now.
There's one tenant in there right now, currently.
Tell us. I'm assuming you have a presentation.
Oh, yes, any questions?
And also, the Lombardo sign.
Um, so, do you want to talk?
Yeah.
Specific question about the sign?
Yes, is it going to remain?
Yes, as Natalie had pointed out, so the sign itself, we're gonna take it down and we're gonna put the new faceplate on for the Hattie logo. So the sign you see there will be the same, it will just be painted with the new colors and they're gonna use neon in the sign.
Will the name Lombardo stay on the sign?
No, will not.
Why not? That that is so historic. To change that, I think changes the whole character, I mean, everybody is gonna know it's gonna be Hatties and you will have other signs out there like on the awning. And maybe even put an additional one on the corner, but does the sign itself have to change? Does that mean that neon and that sign is so historic and it's been repaired and restored prior to the time the building, the the owners gave up the building?
So, yeah, that that's the proposed Hattie sign. We would like to change Lombardo's letters to say Hatties, because that's the only signage we will have on the front of the building. Again, we want to keep the historic Lombardo's feel and look and we're just, you know, proposing to change the letters only and the color. But the size, the shape will all remain the same.
Is it gonna be neon?
Yes.
It's gonna be real neon or the fake neon?
Really.
That gives me some
And it's, I'm sorry, but it also was approved by SHPO as well. No, it's, it's, we want to keep it historic.
Okay. Any other questions? Probably wasn't in my mind.
Just one one question, do you still gonna be using the parking lot across the street centers?
Yes, yep.
I'm gonna be a little while, just between you and Pearl's. Yep. They got a lot, yeah, okay. You don't, you don't have.
Do you know who owns that lot?
Do not know. I'm not sure, but I could look into it.
Yeah, because if it's, especially if it's with part of the empty lot program, I can't remember the name of the organization. That may be a real easy acquisition, just to clean that area.
When do you expect to to start and then complete?
So we've started.
We started.
It ended up, but we we did get permits that were then pulled back to come through planning. So we intend we'd be finishing in the fall currently.
Okay, um, any other questions? Planning staff have comments?
Oh, yes, so as we were talking about the sign, they are in the historic district. They will be needing a minor certificate of appropriateness to come through, so that'll come through and get reviewed by our deputy director. The, like you stated earlier, this stipulation kicked the conditional use permit requirement because of the over five thousand square feet. They are covering five thousand four hundred square foot of the area of the existing building. And traditionally, this would be a change of tendency, but because of the vacancy period, it's a change of use, which further kicks it into a conditional use permit. Our recommendation is for the approval of the conditional use permit.
Any questions, the staff? Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the conditional use request for this project.
So moved.
Move Michael in the next yard, is there a second? Second by Martin Hall. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Actually, wait.
Thank you, thank you very much.
This ends the public hearing agenda and we'll now go into the meeting. Item on the meeting agenda is forty-two Corporate Circle. The applicant is a dust pad awakening LLC, represented by engineer Daniel Perschur. And the proposal is to construct a seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse with seven loading docks and parking for seventy-five cars. And that we saw this project five or six months ago in November, so this is the second appearance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a PowerPoint presentation, I think we're going through relatively quickly, since I'm one that I've seen before. The next one, next sheet has the zoning of the area, and this is somewhat critical because we're in a pine bush overlay district. We did need a variance because there's a vacant piece of property behind us between us and Connor Road. And because I need a hundred and fifty foot setback from a vacant parcel, we didn't have that, even though the Pinebrush Reserve Commission said they had no interest in the property for the purpose of preservation. So the variance was granted, so we're over that hump, and now we're back to the board trying to finalize our our development review plan. Next is a, this is existing conditions, it's almost entirely covered by asphalt parking. It's used, this was when FYE, which was a tenant of thirty-eight, had an awful lot of employees. They no longer have them in employees, so the owner determined that they no longer leave this much parking and not parking on the on the east side of that building on thirty-eight. So our demolition is, we're gonna remove all existing parking there. Nothing, and some parking in front of thirty-eight is gonna be reworked to allow a better circulation pattern. That's next. This is the site plan. And the site plan is, shows the additional parking. We had to enlarge the stormwater management facility because it was undersized for the other building and payment because it was done before the current speediest P P O twenty oh one was in place, the manifest was done before oh two was in place. So it predates the ordinances or the state, the state laws. So we had enlarged that large, large basin, which is north of the new building. And then we had to add another one south of the building to handle the roof branch. Next. This is a letter from the only Pinebrush Reserve Commission, which said that they had that this will not impact their need to preserve the area of pine bush. It doesn't conflict with their plan. And next is the landscaping plan. This landscaping plan uses all native pinebrush species. That was one recommendation from the Pinebrush Reserve Commission, who are very familiar with pinebrush preserve native species, we've used them for years, and these are all native pinebrush species. We had street trees and and other smaller vegetation. Next. This is the lighting, the lighting conforms with the with the pinebrush request, that could be LED lightings. They don't like metal hell light, because unfortunately butterflies fly in metal hell light and they don't survive that that very well. Uh, next. This is the floor plan, you can see that the the office area is fairly small in the lower left-hand corner. And there's some other workspaces. The center, the center, seven loading docks, and then there's some more workspace to the north of that, but it's primarily for storage. This is a storage and a storage and whatever we call the buildings now, they're not warehouses in the city, but they're for storage. Next, storage and wholesale distribution. This is a rendering of the view of the building. The the office area is the the lower area, the warehouse has the higher roof on it so that it can store, most of these buildings have fracking systems of up to like thirty-two feet high. Uh, next. This is a low elevation of the front of the building where the handicap parking is and the entrances. That the building does have some colors on it, it's not a bland building, it does mix two two tones of earth tone colors on the siding of the building, and the third color is introduced around the office. Next. We need some waivers, the first waiver is sidewalks, this area has no sidewalks in it. And it would be, we don't think of building the sidewalk to nowhere, which is something New York State DOT doesn't allow on our highways. And we don't think the city really wants us to put a sidewalk out here since it's the only sidewalk there. So we're asking a waiver for requirement for sidewalks on the entirety of our property. Next, the right-of-way access, this is a strange one, but because a right-of-way access is only twenty feet, but there's an exception in there where vehicle movements or templates shall be right to use to deciding the appropriate width. So the next slide shows what happens. If we pull trucks in and out of here, the twenty-foot width doesn't work. You can see the northern driveway is quite wide because the trucks have to make a turn inside the project. We could obviously do it different if a truck pulled in and then backed up and pulled in again. A lot, what happens on a lot of our city streets, trucks can't access a driveway on the first time, so they pull in, they back up, they pull in again, and they make the final turn in. This is meant to be all conforming turns in and out of the site, they don't have to go off the pavement and they and they don't have to make multiple turns. So requesting a waiver to fifty to allow fifty-six foot wide, which is the, which is the northern opening. And the last waiver we requested is we have one parking spot that's in front of the building plane. That one parking spot, Paul, there is out in front of the building, and you're not allowed to have one of those. We're requesting that waiver for the one parking spot because we're providing required number of parking, one per thousand square feet. If we couldn't have that parking spot, we'd have to go back for another variance to allow us to have seventy-four parking spots. We don't think it affects the site very much, we think allowing that one parking spot waiver would be a good choice. And I think that might be the end.
Questions to the student group?
Yeah, I always prefer to see sidewalks by some standards. And, but another question is, is that used to trend at all to one company, one tenant?
Well, the the tenant that's renting, the company that owns it is in Dust Pad, they own both, they own thirty-eight and they own forty-two. The private tenant here, there are multiple tenants in existing FYE building. This would be entirely habitated by F E FYE for their staff. So this is staff and storage. So it all free up some space in the other building, but essentially FYE needs some more space, so they're growing again. They used to be a very large corporation and they suffered some losses and they cut down significantly in size, they're they're growing back again.
All the questions? Okay, staff, will you make the presentation?
Yes, just to reiterate some points here, they are in front of us for the secret lead agency declaration. This would be uncoordinated review. We have heard back from the Albany County Planning Board, they have made some recommendations, which incidentally fall within our other departmental requirements. They did go in for an BCA to get a variance to allow for the twenty-four foot setback, where the minimum setback of one fifty feet is required. They did get that variance. The waivers, as you heard, we recommend approval. As the first one, the sidewalk, they're in the light industrial zoning district. And there is existing lack of sidewalks, so there would be no connections there. For the right-of-way access, they have submitted us the documentation proving the need for the larger width there for the trucks. And for the parking location, it is one spot that is in front of the front plane, which would otherwise not be permitted per the USDL. We recommend approval, the planning staff recommends approval for the waivers and approval for the development end review application with conditions. Again, these conditions are primarily final outstanding approvals from other departments.
Okay, questions to the staff? Okay, if not, I'll put into motion to approve the project with recommended waivers, which include waiver for the sidewalk requirements, the waiver for the right-of-way access and waiver for the parking location, as well as these conditions, which I will to read for the record. Prior to the issue of building permit, the right-of-way application as required by the Department of General Services shall be submitted and approved. And street open permits as required by the Department of General Services shall be submitted and approved. And the maintenance and protection of the traffic plan shall be submitted to the Division of Traffic Engineering for approval. And final approval shall be obtained from the Division of Engineering and the Department of Water and Water Supply. And let the applicant shall subdivide the existing park into two tax lots to be known as thirty-eight Corporate Circle and forty-two Corporate Circle. And forty two corporate circle. Do you want a second? We'll go with. So I'll entertain a second for that.
Second.
Any further comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, it's, that is unanimous. We also have to move, uh, as probably reminded me. As state environmental quality reviewer and are, are we. Very, with uncoordinated reviews, lead agencies. Okay, so it would be, um, the planning board can see. Um, see, lead industry play on coordinated review. Do I have a motion?
Some votes.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hirschberg, you're up again for. An amendment to our previously approved site plan from a while ago, a while ago, actually thirty pound lane. The applicant is the Bora Cardona, we see, uh, represented by Mr. Hirschberg. And the proposal was eliminating the proposed original parking structure that the planning board had approved. And instead providing the parking lot, the surface parking lot. So our actions under consideration is a site plan amendment.
I, I've had a very brief PowerPoint with this and I'm to just lean and the first one shows the zoning of the site. And the zoning here is actually split between R two and R T. Well. Do you have another slide? Or is that the only slide you got? Oh, here we are. The purple and the pink, one is R two is the pink and, uh. And the purple is R T. So we got a split zoning in here. So. Uh, that was all resolved at the time we first got our site plan approval, uh, and a project location is. It's joined on one side by land zone by, uh, George Zerera on the other side by condominium project. And next. This is the original plan. We showed garages on the site. The, um. The applicant, uh, ran into additional costs, as everybody knows, because the structure went up and he believes that. For financial reasons, he prefers not to have to build the garages. His own income will get from won't, won't. Be able to support the cost of building them these days. So he wants to eliminate those parking costs. And the next plan shows that with the surface parking. Not a disturbance of pinebrush behind it. The, the area behind that, there's a, there's another line drawn beyond that parking. The land behind it is, is dedicated to the pine bush or preserved for the pine bush. And that, that remains the same. So what you see here is a plan that we, we have the other ones other than the garage is on the place. And actually we increased the previous area from seventy six point eight five percent to like eighty four percent. So. The effect is a more green site and building the garages and it goes to the, uh. The purpose of this of making it more affordable, so, uh. It's likely to be completed and rented. The building is, uh, is closed down already and they're, they're working inside the building to finish it.
Okay, questions? You're none, um, staff or decisions?
The, um, as stated earlier, uh, the previous approval for the site plan was given in March of twenty eighteen. Um, and then approval extension was granted in March of twenty nineteen. As Mr. Hirschberg mentioned, uh, the applicant is, um, requesting the amendment due to primarily due to higher costs of construction. We do recommend an approval for the site, uh, plan amendment.
Okay. Any questions on staff? You're none? I'll undertake a motion to approve the site plan amendment. Some of them. Seven seconds. Is there a second?
I'll cycle it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Who unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move. To the final item on the agenda. Final scoping document. For the. Mission of two fifty seven. South Pearl Street. And the final scoping document is related to. The full environmental impact statement. And I want to reiterate, uh, the comments, um, that are the upstream data in the beginning. And why is that? Probably state environmental quality review and scoping process, the deadline for public comment. For the scoping process was the end of business February tenth. This year, therefore no public comment will be taken at the upcoming planning board meetings today. And. Pertaining to the current agenda item, adoption of the final scope. Post the scoping comment deadline of February tenth, twenty twenty three, the proposed final scope. Has been reviewed and will be decided by the planning board at this meeting. And when this meeting is completed, um, the entire scope, uh, will be available for public access. While February tenth was the deadline for comments pertaining to the final scope. There will be future planning board meetings wherein the board will be reviewing the application. These will be public meetings and will allow for the public comment in person and written. And we do. Uh, really encourage. Written comments as well as comments, um, in person. Because that way everybody, the public and the planning board and the planning staff have. Complete files and access, uh, to documents. The planning staff will be following the notice, noticing procedure and utilizing additional methods. To make sure that the constituents and stakeholders are informed. The application will also. Be reviewed by the Historic Resources Commission. These will be public meetings as well and allow for the public attendance and comment. So in short, what we have before us is, um, the. Full public scope. Document, the final scoping document. That, um, the applicant will follow, uh. And answer the items and issues and questions that have been raised. These items and issues and questions. Were put together, uh, through the comments that the board received at previous meetings. From comments that the board members themselves made. And from comments, um, and concepts that were developed by city staff, planning staff and other members of the staff. Of the city staff. So I will read, um, the proposal. Whereas the planning board of the city hall, they have received the site plan applications from the capital city rescue mission. Proposing to demolition, to demolish and then construct and expand a living other use involving a four story. Thirty one thousand four hundred and sixty square foot building and facility space at property located at two five seven. South Pearl Street Albany. The site is located within the mixed use core. Of the mixed use form based south end, which is, uh, designated as M U F S zoning district. The proposal would combine parcels at two forty five, two forty nine and two fifty seven, South Pearl Street. And also seventy eight, eighty, eighty two and eighty four Trinity Place into a single parcel. And whereas the planning board has one classified the application as a type one action. Secondly, established itself as the lead agency. Thirdly, issued a positive declaration. Fourthly, determine a generic environmental impact statement is appropriate for the project. And for provided notice of said positive declaration. And whereas the planning board pursuant to, uh, six, New York C R R six seventeen point eight. One received and accepted a draft G I S scope. On November ninth, twenty twenty two. Secondly, filed appropriate notice and conducted a. D G E I S scoping session on January sixth, twenty twenty three. Learned allowed for twenty day of a comment period on the draft scope. Which expired on February tenth, twenty twenty three. Fourthly, considered the comments received on the dress scope. And five, developed a final scope. For the D G E I S. In consultation with its council. The planning board and the Department of Planning and Development. And whereas the planning board has independently reviewed and considered the content of this final scope. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the state environmental quality review regulations, the planning board hereby adopts. The final scope for the city capital rescue mission project. Revision date, February fourteenth, twenty twenty three, as the final scope for preparation. Of the environmental impact statement. And be a further resolved. That the planning board hereby authorizes and directs the Department of Planning and Development to file copies of the final scope with all enroiled agencies. As well as interested agencies, the applicant and other parties as identified in the scope. That is the. Resolution and I put that up for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
I looked up and wrote there. Seconded by Christopher Ellis. Uh, does the staff have any comments?
Yeah.
Okay. You're done? I will call for a vote. All in, in favor. You say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, uh, the question I do have is to the staff. How do we have a deadline for having the applicant complete this, um, scope or is that kind of fluid?
Yeah, the time period, time period for that is pretty much free open. Um, let me do work with the F and on that. Under the seeker, there's not a specific timeframe for it. Um, we do have forty five days to determine completeness. Once they submit the, the draft E I S.
Okay, thank you. Is there further business to come before the board?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I know I'm not speaking on anything, but I, to correct the record. We use the term draft generic environmental impact statement. This is not a generic, um, statement. Your record should be changed to D E I S draft environment. There's no. But I know you read it that way. I don't know whether it was printed that way, but you read.
Yes, it was. Yeah, we, we will change that. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.